We're going to call to order the city council meeting of September 15th for the City of Lake Mills. Apologize, we're a little late, have some technical difficulties here, but it looks like we're all on, so if I could get a roll call, please.
Diane.
Here.
Here. Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Doug? You there? Anything?
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Got you.
Okay, Mr. Fritsch?
Yeah, here.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt? Here. Mr. Fields?
There you go, he's here.
Thank you.
That's it, we got everybody?
Excuse me, this is Gregor, did you guys have online meetings?
Yep, it is set up.
I'll try it again.
Okay. Okay, it's gone, alright.
That was my one that wasn't hooked up.
Okay, everybody can rise, please rise, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to be public for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, item number four, correction and or approval of the city council meeting minutes of September 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Seconded. And seconded, is there, I guess, no comments, any discussion from anybody? If not, let's call the roll call vote on that, please.
Mr. Foster?
I'm staying.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion pass 4-0.
Okay, Becky Misty, item five, correspondence, and we'll start with the lady that's not in the room, Becky, why don't you go ahead?
I got an email from constituents about the situation at Cedars, I guess that's being handled, and then I got multiple emails about the crossing for Pinnacle today.
The one said, "Vicky."
Same one as Vicky had, okay. Doug?
Same one as Vicky had.
Alright, well Steve, go ahead.
I zoomed into for a call-in, something I cracked them back this week, the email on it, what was going on there, also constituent talked about the South Side, those processes through zoning and how to go, and just update, concerned how fast to move sometime, and what the plans for the South Side development. Went cutting at the fire, this is this after, New Town, very good deal, letter on boat slips being taken up at the department, that'll probably be on our agenda, it was discussed, and then I received the email on bike activities. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you, and I don't have anything other than the same questions that you all received, so the stuff at the Cedars, the boat slip rental, and some of the Pinnacle stuff that we're going to talk about this evening, so let's move on. Get the stuff back up here, items, item number six. We're going to go into question and public comment. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, which we don't have any public hearings tonight, you're asked to hold your comments until that hearing. Public comments may also be made this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes as best you can, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided, so the folks that are here, there should be a sign-in sheet, if there isn't one, we'll make sure we have one, and if you're making comments from online, enter your information in the chat function. So we are open for questions and public comment, we'll go with the folks that are in the room first. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak? I keep mutting my microphone. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay, Mr. Foster.
Okay, is there anybody online that wishes to speak in public comment?
Um, I'm just looking at the messages, it looks like there are some messages, but they were about 20, I don't know, a minute or so ago, I believe there's a Jean that wants to speak.
Yeah, I heard her pop up before we started the meeting.
Okay.
Jean, can you unmute your mic?
Hello, yeah, I just wanted to say that I could hear, thank you.
Okay.
Sue, do you want to make any comments now, I know you're out?
No, I got on kind of late, so I think I'm, I'm good, because...
Alright, whoa, the item comes up, you'll have a chance.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so with that then, we will close the questions and public comment, we'll go to the city manager's report.
You just saw the two check registers that were available, pre-review, and you're going to find out this week that there's a lot of asphalt going on in the city, the maintenance work, and some of the final patching on Mulberry, and the repair on Pinnacle or all route will be done probably this week or next week. Okay, so you'll probably see a lot of that, every work we're probably shooting for doing the weed and seed on Mulberry in a week or two, so Brian will probably be walking up into Mulberry Street here shortly.
Did they raise or lower the manholes on Mulberry?
Raised them.
They raised all, all the manholes were raised.
Okay.
If any of them were a half inch or more, although there were a couple that were half inch to one inch to half inches, they raised those, I think there were five that got raised. They are working on some of the water valves, and them all, they should be pretty much done. Then we have some greening and seeding that we want to finalize, the weed and seed, see how, we're going to spread down this form and see how it goes, and then we may have to come back in in the spring and finalize, and then there was one spot on Fargo Street where we had some trees that we want to take out as part of that project, Rob will probably be taking those down in mid-October and finalizing the greating and seeding there. Any other questions?
I see a lot of marking up there on the, all the manhole covers and along the route on, was that B up there by McDonald's? It's marked the whole way, I see green marks, like somebody had marked...
Yes, that's, that's Everstream, they're, they're putting in fiber up, and they're putting together plans to run it along County Highway V, they're actually running all the way through the county, so I'll come in and B, and then turn out B, and then back out B, and they've asked, they've called in for, okay, to, it'll start their...
Oh, okay. Okay, I was worried they were going to start some roadwork there, and I hadn't heard anything about it, so, okay, anybody else have any question?
We were looking at doing some work at the intersection, if you remember that sanitary sewer where they hit that horse mane up there at the stain light, and we had a traffic problem.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yep.
That had to be repaired, and we were looking, working with them last week to find out when they wanted us to repair it, looks like we might just tie it in with our contracts for next summer, so, guess we'll wait and see what happens there.
And you think it'll cause any issues through the winter and the thawing?
Didn't last a year in it, if it does, we'll just re-patch it, it's, I don't even think it was possible to notice that it's there right now.
Yeah, not now you don't, no. Okay, anybody else have anything for Steve? Hearing nothing, we will move on to item eight, which is acceptance of the minutes of the Public Works Board of August 11th, 2020, and the Senior Advisory Board of August 6th, 2020, those will go on record as written. Item nine, council business, we are moving into tavern operator licenses, and I'd like each one of these read as a separate item, and we'll discuss each one separately, so Misty, if you can read off the first one.
Kalen Nord.
Alright, do we have a motion of approval for this tavern operator license for Kalen Nord? So moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, is there any other discussion? Hearing nothing, call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye. Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Alright, read the next one, please.
Brooke Goodrich McGrath.
Alright, do we have a motion on this one? Alright, do we have a motion of denial on this one based on not meeting state statutes?
I'll make a motion, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny based on not meeting state statutes, state regulations, and a second, so that was...
I would like the motion to, I'm getting feedback, for direction of the city clerk to inform the African running about the decision, that would be in their motion, and then I'll second it.
So you, you made the motion, and you seconded.
I thought Vicky did.
Yeah, I only heard you.
Okay.
I didn't hear Vicky, sorry. And then we have Doug that seconded.
So it's a motion to deny.
To deny, to deny, yep. Okay, is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none, an affirmative answer is to deny the request, so please call a roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Alright, thank you, could you read the last name, please?
Elliot Schuman.
And I will entertain a motion on this one, whichever way the motioner would like to make it, whether to approve or deny.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, an affirmative for this one will be to approve, please call a roll.
Mr. Foster, can I just get clarification on who made that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, Doug made the motion, and Diane seconded it, sorry, keep forgetting you're not in the room today.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Motion passed 3-2.
Alright, thank you, let's move on to item B, in order for us to discuss this one, we must take this off the table, so I would entertain a motion to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Yep, Mr. Fields, motion, and Diane seconded.
Thank you.
Please call a vote.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Motion passed 3-2.
Alright, thank you, let's move on to item B, in order for us to discuss this one, we must take this off the table, so I would entertain a motion to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Yep, Mr. Fields, motion, and Diane seconded.
Thank you.
Please call a vote.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, so it's off the table, could we get the title of that read, please?
City Council motion 20-9-2-1 authorizing the city clerk to notify John's disposal service that the price options have been reviewed, and the city managers authorized to sign a contract extension.
Okay, so I know we talked about a few options here, so I will, how do we want to do this?
Does this motion...
It doesn't ask us to pick one.
Yeah, do we have to make the motion to add the second?
Yeah, that's what, to amend it, to add whatever we're thinking that we would like to add, and we did get that information.
Yes.
So, no, reverse, excuse me, that's clarification, the motion that that includes also amended it to add recycling every week, is what I called, that was the amendment.
That was amended already?
Correct.
Okay.
Recycling, recycling every week.
Okay, so as we stand right now, the motion is amended to add recycling every week, and unless anybody else wants to make another motion, we will accept a motion of adoption.
Yeah. I'll move to adopt, as amended.
Okay, so that was Diane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second is Mr. Fritsch. Alright, so what does this do for us now? This will give us recycling every week, and trash every single week, and the bulk pickup once a month, and this raises...
And the bulk pickup requires the owner to...
Call.
Call or text, I think, can you email?
Yeah, I believe so, yep.
They want your first experience to be a call, and they created me in the call queue.
Okay.
So, and it's once a month without charge.
Great, so this adds, wow, my eyes are bad, I guess I could put my glasses on, maybe I could see better, dollar... 25, yeah, so it adds a dollar 25 per month, for everybody to have recycling every single week, how are we gonna, well, we could talk about how we notice it later, but this does not include the recycling of electronics, correct?
Right.
You can recycle electronics.
Yeah, I guess...
You just have to pay, it's not incorporated into the fee.
Right, exactly, but it does look like they offer that, two collections per year to do that, and that's what that 2021 weekly recycling and electronics would have been.
Yes.
So that would have added another 50 cents a month to do that, so at this point, we're looking at just the 2021 weekly recycling and weekly trash, and that is a total of $15.39.
Question? I'm having trouble with getting up what I want to see, but when is the electronics pickup? Does it say in there?
No, it doesn't say, it says you can add it, and you would have two...
Oh, but we don't have it.
We don't have it, no.
Okay.
We don't have it.
I thought we did.
Yeah, that would be an extra added fee, and they would come twice a year to pick up TVs and all that stuff, right now you just, still have to just pay for it to get rid of it. Okay, so as amended, with weekly recycling, it raises our rate to 1539, which is a dollar 25 more a month, to have two extra pickups of recycling, and...
Basically every week, right?
Right, basically every week you have recycling and trash.
Okay, got it.
Yep, every, and according to their agreement, if we sign this, this would also stay the same rate for, for 2021.
The only addition compared to this year will be the dollar 25.
Right, so we won't see a raise until somewhere in 2022. Yeah.
We get some secret money, so it won't break down, it's exactly this company, when we put it on the pill, it'll be, it'll be different, because we get credit on all $20,000 a year, so we can put that in, and we can do our calculation at that point.
Okay.
But it's also, it's also, we'll be very modest, we're not, because, you know, we assign a fee in December, and then people call and people call, and...
Sure.
We don't know what our, our expenses are going to be, so...
Right.
It may not exactly be 1539, see our recommendation at December.
Okay, yeah, and there's nothing saying we can't look at this later down the road and say we want to take that extra two weeks off, if we have to, and...
They say, they want it to work there, if they can, excuse, excuse, aside, we want to take it off.
They take it off, okay.
I have a comment.
Yep.
I do want to let, let people know that I had several families in my ward who really wanted the extra recycling. I think it's something that you can live without, when you have one or two people in the house. Once you start having children, and so forth, recycling just seems to multiply.
As people become more responsible with recycling too, they start putting more in there, so, okay, so we have motion and a second, as amended, for approval of this contract. Is there any other comments before I ask for the roll call? Alright, let's, please call a roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Alright, thank you. Item 9C, discussion decision on the electrical utility pole attachment agreement and fee schedule, could I get that read, please, the title read, please?
City Council motion 20-9-2-2, approval of utility pole attachment agreement and fee schedule.
Okay, do we have a motion of adoption for this motion?
So moved.
Oh, we, we don't have a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, we do.
She just read it.
Yeah, yeah, she just read it, yep. Okay, so you got, you got the motion, Diane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fields, alright, so I looked at this, and we're looking at like $15 per year to connect, and then connection fees to set them up, is there anything else you'd like us to know, or does anybody have any actual questions for Steve?
Diane actually wrote the agreement, and did their, on the project, it's pretty standard, I mean, by our association, and most cities have adopted, these are a little bit different from city to city, because some cities have started charging for a couple years already, or a little bit behind, and they recommend that you start at this level and work up, so... It may not exactly be fifteen thirty-nine, see our recommendation at December.
Okay. Yeah, and there's nothing saying we can't look at this later down the road and say we want to take that extra two weeks off if we have to and. They take off, okay. Okay.
I have a comment. I do want to let people know that I had several families in my board who really wanted the extra recycling. I think it's something that you can live without when you have one or two.
Bo in the house.
Bo in the house. Once you start having.
Children.
Children and so forth, so forth. Recycling just seems to multiply.
As people become more responsible with recycling too, they start putting more in there, so. Okay, so we have motion and a second as amended for approval of this contract. Is there any other comments before I ask for the roll call? All right, let's please call a roll.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
All right, thank you. Item nine C, discussion decision on the electrical utility pole attachment agreement and fee schedule. Could I get that read, please? The title read, please?
City Council motion twenty-nine-two-two, approval of utility pole attachment agreement and fee schedule.
Okay. Do we have a motion of adoption for this motion?
So moved.
Oh, we, we, we don't have a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, we do.
She just read it.
Yeah, yeah, she just read it, yep. Okay, so you got, you got the motion, Diane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fields. All right. So I looked at this and we're looking at like fifteen dollars per year to connect and then connection fees to set them up. Is there anything else you'd like us to know, or does anybody have any actual questions for Steve?
Dan actually wrote the agreement and did their time on the project. It's pretty standard, I mean. By our association. And most cities have adopted, these are a little bit different from city to city because some cities have started charging for a couple of years already, or a little bit behind, and they recommend that you start at this level and work out, so.
So, my question would be, if they start coming in, are we, we going to allow them to put them on our, like our new lake poles we have down South Main, and then how do they get power into those? Do they tap off the power of the, is that what it is?
No, they, they couldn't attach to the streetlights. They're not designed to handle that kind of weight and they don't have the power requirement. They would put in their own poles and bring power from wherever the appropriate power was located.
Yeah. Yeah, I started digging into some of these, and some of the devices themselves are less than a pound. So.
In little boxes or what?
Yeah, little, little devices.
So in other words, they're not big enough to.
Right.
They're smaller than the transformer.
Yeah.
But they're, they'll have a lot of them.
Yeah, they're, they're they're smaller than the little cameras that you're seeing up on the walls here, these little cameras, they're smaller than that, so they potentially could hook to most anything. And, you know, if, if that was the case, it could eliminate the need for them to erect a lot of extra poles and stuff like that. I guess we just have to look at it as the time comes when they, when they get to that point. But it does look like we have a fee schedule set up already for attachment and then a yearly schedule, I think it was fifteen bucks a year, I think, to have those things on there, and then they paid for their electricity, from my understanding. Anything else for us, Dan, that we should know about this?
I think it's important to let you know that it did go through the Public Works Board. They did amend the agreement that's in front of you, removing a specific section. The, the agreement itself is pretty typical, a lot of different MEW members are using this, this same agreement. It was tailored for Lake Mills. There are issues that we've had in the past with regard to pole connections, this isn't, this isn't new by any means, but we ran into a situation where there was certain poles that were owned by the city, certain poles that were owned by specific entities, We Energies for instance, and we ran into kind of a break-even proposition where we were using their, their facilities, they were using our facilities, so there was a lack of lease agreements of charging contractors for a number of years during the 2010s. This is an effort to fix that, so we're required to, to do this and to have the attachments available to utilities under state statute, so this is really an attempt to get us with a clear framework and understanding on how to proceed on this issue, and it's combined with the five, the implementation of 5G throughout the country. You, you passed an ordinance, actually, is that on the final reading today? Yeah, final reading today. This is new contractors and new entities are coming to municipalities throughout the country, looking for the opportunity to do this, and we're required to by statute, so.
Okay.
I have a question for Dan.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion as we, as I made it, does it reflect the change that the Public Works Board?
Yes, the agreement itself does, and the, the agreement that you're adopting has been amended by Public Works. That is their recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. There was a second form of calculation of the fees that was involved, that's a little bit outdated. It was Schedule A-1 that was included originally. Paul Hermanson, the Director of Public Works, and myself discussed it prior to the Public Works Board meeting last week, and then we presented it to the Public Works Board with that in mind. We wouldn't mind if you removed Section A-1 specifically and all directives within the document regarding Section A-1. We're not going to engage in that calculus. Our calculus will simply be the number of attachments, the annual rate. I think it's simpler.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We all good? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mr. Fritsch?
He's trying.
Uh.
There he is, okay, it is working. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear if he made his vote.
Yes, he did.
And that was a yes?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
All right, thank you. Item nine, the discussion decision on golf cart crossing design options Pinnacle Drive. Could I get that title read, please?
City Council motion twenty-nine-two-three, authorizing the city manager to proceed with alternative blank, providing appropriate improvements for golf cart crossing located on Pinnacle Drive.
Okay, could I get a motion of adoption, knowing that we will have to fill in Section Five and, Section, yeah, Five? Then two items in Section Six.
So moved.
And a second?
Second. That's Diane.
Diane, yep. Mr. Fields with the motion, Diane with the second.
And I'd also like to suspend the rules to allow our speaker to speak when we want him to speak. I don't know if we want him to speak now or in a little bit, but.
Okay, let's vote on the motion, motion first, for the, for the city council motion. Call the roll call vote, please.
Wait, for what?
This is. Oh, I'm sorry, we got the second, sorry, you're right, you're right, never mind. Right, and we just said that knowing well, full well, we have to fill in those alternatives. Okay, so you have a motion.
Suspend the rules till that are.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Field seconded, okay, let's call this roll call vote.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we got through that, thank goodness. My assumption is, Dan, you have the lead on this one for us?
I heard myself or Steve, how do you want to proceed?
Whoever would like to. I'd like to hear from the staff first.
Dustin is also online.
Yep.
There.
Those headphones in the back.
If you put those on, you should be able to hear. Dustin is online, he did prepare option number six. Mike, if you remember, we met with the golf course, we had a conversation about four options, we came up with option number five, we then met with Levert and Stuber, and there was some, you know, there was a lot of conversation, and we came up with option six, which is the one that's by itself there. I think that we came out of that meeting thinking that option six as a test solution would be, was the least expensive, and it gave us the opportunity to make some changes if we needed to in the future. And what we were looking at was being able to paint it on, put in some parking, warning signs, and maybe put up some rumble strips or speed bumps that could be taken in and out with the golf season. Dustin, he recommended, he kind of came out of that meeting with that concept. Dustin was working on putting it together, got it out this morning. And so you should have a copy of that, it's on the agenda. I think I feel comfortable doing it that way, as long as we know that we may need to make some adjustments in the future. But those are, I'm sure, but they're some kind of traffic, device to slow that curve down so that, you know, golf carts come along and moving through the roadway have some opportunity to get across. So that's kind of where, I don't know if Dan wants to add anything or Dustin?
Steve, I would just, I would add a couple of things. As you said, this is a very scalable option. It builds on option one by adding a little more pavement marking to ensure that vehicles know where they should be oriented, keeping them on their side of the street. It has traditional street signage for vehicles to, to know that they are approaching a golf cart crossing. There are, of course, stop signs for the golf carts themselves before they enter the roadway. As Steve mentioned, removable rumble strips could be added in the future if necessary. Also, a future stop control could be added on Pinnacle Drive itself if, if it's deemed necessary. The last element that's not seen there that was discussed with the, I'll say most impacted property owners, is some small landscaping elements by their driveway on either side of the sidewalk that would prohibit the passage of a golf cart from driving down the sidewalk in case someone felt that was the route to go in, and that would just be an element that would be developed with, with the property owners, it would probably entail some large rock and planting a shrub or two, to make it so the width of the sidewalk is as wide as something it could be. Someone would truly have to drive through the middle of someone's front yard to, to try to go that way. So again, this is, I'll say, low-hanging fruit. It is the least expensive, easiest to implement option to determine if it's successful, if it's not. The other options that have been outlined involve a little more infrastructure improvement, moving curb lines, et cetera. Those were not desired by the adjacent property owners, if not necessary.
Okay, could you bring up those different options, or somebody bring up those different options and just talk us through the different options? And my understanding, there's been meetings with both the owners of the golf course and some of the property owners, and it'd be nice to know exactly what, what their thoughts were. So I know we have some folks here in the audience.
And also, the question was brought up in email, who's paying for?
Yeah.
That has been, I haven't heard that yet. But I just wonder, do we really have to hear all six? If we've got one that we want to do, and everybody here would agree, then do we need to spend the time on the other five?
Well, you know, it really shouldn't take too long to look through them. I just want to understand what one does and what six does. Steve, do you want to run through them? You want me to run through them, or Dwayne, or Dan?
I don't really have an option for sharing another screen. I don't. I don't think.
I can hold my phone up to it and just show everybody. It's kind of awkward, isn't it? That's not really going to work.
There you go.
There we go. So, the first question regarding payment, the expectation is that the golf course is paying for these improvements. They have poorly stated that they were going to. This is their infrastructure, the city is not obligated to allow this crossing in this location. This is a compromise that they're, they'd like to make based on the history of where the golf cart crossing has been, and it has changed with development through the area, through time here, but they, they are expected to pay for these improvements. To answer your subsequent question, the golf course's initial response was, number one is the cheapest solution that you've presented to us, we would prefer that solution. However, they restated in that, as we discussed some of the pitfalls of number one, that regardless of what the choice was, they were going to be willing to pay for it. Number one is by far the, kind of the lowest infrastructural burden. There isn't much improvement with regard to curb lines, roadwork, it is paint and some, some, some markers. Option six expanded upon option number one, and you'll see a price point that's more expensive, however, I believe it will be less expensive than the other infrastructural kind of heavy improvements that you see through two through five. I guess those answer your specific questions, Mrs. Fritsch. Where would you like to go from here?
I think the council wanted to hear.
At one and six is fine, I think, unless anybody else wants to hear the other ones. My, my big concern with one or six is still the, the issue of having traffic going in two different, actually, three different directions on that, on that stretcher road, two cars going in one direction and then carts going in the other direction. So basically, there's no separation between where the cart is and the car is on the road, except for a painted line.
That's not exactly correct. On option six, we do include using those a little over two-foot-tall flexible posts that you see out there now initially to demarcate the route for the, for the carts. Carts would need to be inside of that path, on, on-street path, if you will, to get onto the ramp that continues along between the houses, heading to the, to the west.
Okay. So that, shoot.
And again.
I gotta open that up in a different.
That is something that can be monitored by the city to see if its use is needed in the future. The, the key is to start training the, the golf patrons to follow a system. Removing the ability for them to use the sidewalk will go a long way, so they couldn't go up the driveway and access the sidewalk as they have historically with the improvements we just talked about in the front yard for the, for the most impacted property owner. There is hopefully sufficient striping and signage to direct both vehicles and golf carts, and the amount of time that is on-street is about 125 feet for golf carts, so it's not that they're on, on the street for extended period of time. We are trying to find a solution that is safe, but is also acceptable to the adjacent property owners, or the one, who are the most impacted.
Sure. Okay, no, that makes sense, I see it, it just doesn't, yeah, I see the flexible posts in there now. And those could obviously be removed for the winter, I'm assuming, or is that something that's going to stay there forever?
No, they're, they're coming out in the winter, and hopefully a year or two, they they're done.
They're done.
People trained enough that they know where to go. We also probably will get others to switch them then, because we may need to slow traffic down a little bit more.
Sure.
So it gives us a little bit more flexibility to kind of scale and. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility to kind of scale and get by. It's the best solution to the future. But at this point, it does, it is a very good option. And obviously, it might be what's going to occur over the next year. We're gonna see what they do before we put it there. We'll adjust appropriately in that time period. This one, here at about $2,000. It gives us a little bit, the golf course will do a time to say, you know, we need to be able to flex this.
Sure. So the homeowners are okay with no parking there during the summers?
I don't want to speak for them, but.
Okay. Okay.
And so there would be subsequent action. If that's your desire, we'd have to prepare an ordinance in the future for you to actually make that change. This does not contemplate that. No parking.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But yeah, obviously, when those poles are up there, hopefully people won't drive over them to park. But you never know. You never know. You can assume a lot of things. Let's see here. What are the questions?
Should we let people speak?
Yep, we will. Yep. Any questions before? Okay, all right. So we do, we did suspend the rules. So whoever would like to speak, come on up and say your piece and we'll go from there.
Why don't we let the landowners speak first?
That's, that's what I'm doing.
I have probably maybe a minute and a half of some verbiage notes.
Can you go to the mic?
It's not on.
Oh, it's not.
Talk loud.
I'm Jennifer Ewers. My husband Jason, we own 977 technical right where the path would most impact. We did reference the September 9th meeting, which I think we all felt was a strong outcome how to resolve the issues from the carts passing down the sidewalk. We were shown the five options and then with the help of Dustin, came up with what I was referring in my notice to option number one, modifying the city for calling option six, which would take away from the enjoyment we have of the time of the year of sale as well as potentially forcing one of the most expensive and expensive action paths involved, which could result in closure. As Dustin from the planning team asked, September might, you know, they'd wipe out the bunker when it might not be needed. We would encourage the city council to approve the modified option number one, the calling option six, to see how it would affect the issue of the situation.
Who else supported option six? On a lengthy question, the delineated therapy of the setup, according to option six, you're gonna go back almost to the entire length of the acres of water. Is it a word?
I'm gonna switch to option six.
He just got option six in an email today. Maybe you have to take it out of an email.
No, I haven't. I just, it's a separate PDF, so I have to go in, open the PDF and then it should be up here any minute now. You can see the blue line streaking across the top as fast as it can go.
Yeah. My assumption is that.
My assumption was not. That is just to delineate for traffic moving through there that they need to move over because there's gonna be delineators there and there's gonna be traffic. The no parking is gonna be basically in front of Eberts. It is painted lines on the ground, but it won't create no parking. It is just a demarcation to tell traffic to start moving over. If there's a car parked there, it's even better yet because that forces them over anyways. Right. This, all we have to do is where the carts are running. And then this is just the demarcation. Now, if we put delineators there, then it would end up being no parking. But I think we can do something a little bit less obtrusive in that area. We can, we can put some other kind of barrier there.
It'd be ideal if we could start out without it. If it's an issue, we can maybe add some stuff.
Yes, we'll look at this, you know, we talked about the bunker mentality and.
Yep. Just be.
I'm sure we'll be criticized appropriately.
Yep, just because the markers out there, it is, it's just, it's kind of an eyesore too. So if we can get away without them, it'd be ideal. If they're required, we'll have to do something.
And I do have the idea that, I haven't seen any issue with cars going through, but I've seen a lot of issues with golf carts. So if we can get the light. And then I like the attitude of step it up. In other words, we don't have to put the bunker instead unless it's necessary. And then we can react to what happens.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I figured he was raising his hand for. Can you hear us now, Dustin?
Yes, I can.
So yeah, we had two homeowners here, Eberts and their neighbor across the street, and they're both in favor of the option six. And one of the things that was a little bit of, I don't want to say concern, it was discussion, is the delineation marks in front of 965 or 955 Pinnacle, if I can.
Yeah, those are definitely to orient south, I call them southbound travelers on Pinnacle Drive to move over because they will otherwise get caught in a lane that isn't theirs.
Yeah, and the comments were brought up that people might think that's a no parking, which it truly isn't. So we thought about the idea of maybe not putting those there unless we truly need to make sure that traffic moves.
Again, this is a very scalable option, so you can always add pavement marking later if you feel that that's necessary.
Yeah. And I think that's, I think I hit most of the comments. Did I miss anything, folks?
It's a very delicate balance, Mr. Foster, on safety and
It is.
kind of preserving the enjoyment of one's property by the most impacted people, so.
Yeah. I like the option that you put the flexible posts in there because that fulfills the option that I liked, having that little bit of a delineation, at least to start with between the cars and the carts. And then we can adjust from there. If we truly need to keep them there forever, we do. If we don't, we can adjust them and take them out. So I think that's, I think that covers most everything that we've talked about that you may have missed. Does anybody else have any other comments or want to make the recommendation for items five and six in the motion, if I get back to it here? So section five. Who is that?
This is Vicky. I think, just so that we have it on the record, is there a reason that the golf course would not be able to maintain the existing golf cart paths by just renumbering the holes? And so that we don't have to go through any of this? I know that question has been raised, but there hasn't been a discussion about why or why not. So I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah.
Could you just renumber the holes? The rule of the land that has taught that, we would put it between the hard paths and you would have distance zones to take it around. So if you're looking at this right now, you need to look down at this corner right here. Do we see that? No, about this. Which one is it, Dave? Yes, it was, it was very expensive to redo the holes. The options are running with a lot of golf carts driving into golf balls and extremely hazardous conditions. You'd have to change the rest of the holes. So it was much more expensive than the option. It's not possible.
Yeah, but it was, it was much more expensive than the high cost of 15 grand for the most expensive option we had for marking or making changes to the roadway. Yeah, it could almost double that cost for them to try to renumber holes.
At a minimum.
Yeah, at a minimum, you're right. So that's, that's where we sit with that, Vicky. Does that answer the question, you think?
Yeah, you know, it's just unfortunate because I know when this development was originally platted, it was all determined where these golf cart paths were supposed to be and it was made as part of the plat. And why we are in this situation now that we're in, it still boggles my mind as to why did this even happen? It should have remained the way it was originally platted, but I guess there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're in this position now. Hindsight is always 2020, but we are where we are.
Looking at the motion, would six go in all three spots?
It would.
So you need a motion?
Well, it's Mr. Fields' motion currently. So if he was looking to change his motion, he could do that so long as the second approved of his change. That is the active motion.
So I'd move to insert option six into the motion.
Zai, the second?
Yes.
Okay, I will approve the second.
Okay. So we have the motion of adoption with option six. Is there any other conversation? If not, I'm going to ask Misty to call a roll. Okay, go ahead and call a roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, folks, thank you so much. I knew we could get to a starting point here, so I appreciate you bearing with us and suffering through this process. Unfortunately, it takes a little bit longer sometimes when government's involved. But I do appreciate you bearing with us, so thank you. And we'll keep this thing going forward and see what changes need to be made, if any, need to be made in the future. So thank you.
We're real sorry that this even happened.
Yeah.
Which I think what is Vicky was saying.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have even happened.
I guess my only question would be about what Dustin was talking about, about landscaping ideas and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Foster?
Separate meeting. Yeah.
I would suggest that we have them meet with Brian Carranza and probably Dwayne or someone from the city to work through what would be some simple yet effective landscaping options for that little area, something that's acceptable to the property owners.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dustin.
Thank you.
That moves us on to resolution 20-35, the county library tax exemption. Could you read that title, please?
Resolution 20-35, resolution request an exemption from county library tax.
All right, do we have a motion of adoption for this? So moved by Doug Fritsch, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fields. This is our exemption for, that we do every single year so we don't pay the county tax. So there's nothing different on this unless anybody has any discussion on this one. Hearing nothing, call a roll, call a vote, please.
But we can make a motion, yeah. I'll make a motion.
They made the motion. Yeah, we did. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Hi.
Yeah, Misty, go ahead.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Hey, we're all, we're all do those things. I had mine already today. Item nine F, ordinance 1215, can I get that title right, please?
Ordinance 1215, amending chapter 211, utilities municipal, adding article three wireless communications facilities in the right of way.
And this is the third reading?
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion of adoption for this. So, Mr. Fritsch, moved for this adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fields, second. Is there any discussion on this one?
And we never had anybody speak against this at all, so.
No. Okay, let's call a roll, call a vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. That puts us at recommendation for future agendas. Does anybody have anything that we know of right now?
I just have a question, a council member, oh, Dan's not here. I guess you, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Later. Steve, do you have anything you want to let us know about right away? Except for our next meeting on the budget? Yep, budget work session and. Yep, 6:30.
6:30.
All right. Item 11, we will convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute. Item 11, we will convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute 19.851E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And 19.851G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Do we have a motion to move into closed session? And a second?
Second.
Vicky, got it? Call a roll, call a vote, please.
I'm sorry, was it Steve or Doug?
Yes, it was Steve.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, we are now going into closed session after a couple minute recess here. And we will be back in here.